John, can you hear me?
Hi Eric, yeah, loud and clear.
Okay. It's kinda weird because it's showing up like my phone number shows up but the other one like the town of Canadagua shows it as like connecting.
I see both, I see the sign, town of Canadagua and then a separate one with your phone number. Both.
That's weird.
I see you on two, you have two screens.
Now I'm one, right?
Now you're just one, yep. That's good.
How are you John? How was your weekend?
Yeah, pretty good. I was outside today, it's awful, it's really hot.
Yeah, how long were you outside? It seems pretty hot.
Our power went out about five o'clock, twice.
Huh.
So we're back now.
How long was it out for?
Not too long, about five minutes, then it came back, then it went out, then it came back.
It's not great on a hot day like this, certainly don't want people without the air conditioning. Wish I was outside, I had to like close the blinds, it's too nice out.
Well yeah, it's good.
Hey guys, how you doing?
Hey Lance, how are you?
Not too bad, thank you.
Chris called earlier, I told him we probably didn't need him, I think that's probably correct.
Yeah, I guess so, I would think so, I don't see any showstoppers tonight but sometimes my opinion seems to be wrong on things so. But yes, I don't, I would agree with you, Eric, I don't, I don't see any real big reasons why he would have to be here for this one.
Okay. Did you see any of the emails going back and forth about DeMarco?
No, none on DeMarco, I have not, I don't think I was included in any of those.
Alright. They're just wondering about like the sidewalk, I guess Marty's kind of upset about it. We didn't, there was nothing that you can recall where it said like it has to be done by a particular date or like as the first part of the construction process?
So we're talking about the DeMarco sidewalk that runs along County Road 10?
Yeah.
So the, my understanding was that the stone dust trail as shown on the Phase 1 plans had to be put in as part of Phase 1 and then the sidewalk had to be installed and was conditioned as part of Phase 2. But I don't think there was a date associated with that. Like Farmington sometimes, Farmington sometimes says that's gotta be installed no later than like May 31st of the following year, something to that effect. We didn't do Canadagua.
Okay.
Okay. Hi.
Hello.
You guys can see my screen here, right?
Which screen?
Uh, the agenda should be showing.
I have the agenda here, yeah, yeah. Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you Karen.
Okay. I'll sit.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening Chuck.
Good evening.
Karen, we got Amanda, Gary. Bob, are you out there?
I don't see him here.
Hope I put my earphones in. Are you there Bob?
I don't see Bob yet, I don't think he's on.
I don't see Bobby, I don't see him. Thought he was, might be using an alias, but he's not. Okay, we'll give him a minute. How's everyone?
Okay.
Hot.
Good day for the lake, wow.
Very good.
Were there a lot of boats out there?
No.
Why don't you put the flag up for us, Eric? Okay. There she weighs. Alright, will everybody join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance
To the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Alright, welcome to the May 26th virtual meeting of the Town of Canadagua Planning Board. Do a roll call to see who's here. Karen Blasey, board member.
Here.
Brian Stachak, board member.
I am here.
Gary Humes, board member.
Yes, I'm here.
How about Bob, of course? Okay, we'll move on to Amanda Van Lake.
Hi, present.
Thanks Amanda. Alright Amanda, I guess you have to be on your cues and cues here until Bob joins us.
Got it.
Okay. We're also joined by John Robitella.
Yes, I'm here.
Secretary, hi John. We also have Lance Brabant who represents the MRV group who is our consulting engineers.
Yep, good evening.
And is Chris with us tonight?
Chris is not with us, but we can reach him as needed.
Okay, very good, I know, I overlooked him the last meeting, so I want to make sure that I didn't do it this time. And last but not least, our controller and town planner Eric Cooper, who is running the keyboard. Okay, just to, let me see who we got on the call. Is there a couple new people to our, to our meetings? How we proceed, we'll have a, for each application, we'll have a presentation by the applicant. We'll then have comments and questions from the planning board members of the applicant. I will then ask for a response from the applicant, well, the response is usually we ask a question, we get a response from the applicant or his representative, so that goes on for a bit of time and then we, I would open it up to the public for any comments from the public. I would then go through the outside third-party reviews that we have on a particular application. Make sure that they are well documented and we've covered any concerns that those reviews may have. Then I would go back to the applicant for any final comments and at that point, we would deliberate and take action on the application. So if you would like to talk, please announce who you are by name. If you're not a board member or a staff member, would you please give us your address so we have it for the record? And with that, we will move on to well, there's no, there's no legal notices since we have no public hearings tonight, so that is not in, not the case tonight. I will open it up to anyone in the public who would like to speak on behalf of something not, not on the agenda. They'd like to bring in front of the board. If that's the case, please either raise your hand or state your name and your address and tell us what your concern might be. Okay, hearing none, I assume everyone's online for applications that we're going to discuss tonight. And we'll move on to our first one, which is one that's familiar to us all, 5157 Overlook Lane. Where the applicant, BME Gerber, is proposing to amend the final subdivision grading plan for Old Brookside Section 6 because the as-built dwelling and grading were not constructed according to the grading plan. So Eric, why don't you give us an overview of this thing, I know this thing is drug on. For a couple meetings, it'd be, it'd be nice to put it to bed at some point, are the Cassianos on the call tonight?
I do not.
Don't see them. Alright, well, you want to bring us up to date where we stand?
Sure. So essentially, as you guys know and have seen for a couple projects, they built it too high, which isn't in accordance with how we operate now and has to get revised planning board approval. At the first meeting, if you guys recall, there was a neighbor who complained that the drainage and grading on his property was not done appropriately and the board continued the application so that BME and Gerber could review his property and see if any changes were necessary and what could be made to do that. And we've been waiting since March, I think, for a revised set of plans to address that. Obviously, part of that was due to the whole COVID thing and still probably due to the whole COVID thing. But in a recent conversation with James at BME and as forwarded to you guys in an email, Gerber is the one that apparently holding up or not authorizing BME to work with the neighboring property owner to kind of survey the property, get get gradings and designs and whatnot, and so it kind of comes down to Gerber to authorize their engineer to do the work that the planning board has previously requested.
Okay, and this thing was all kicked off by, I guess, a notice that was sent to to Gerber by our code enforcement officer saying that it was not in compliance with the grading plan and that the elevation, the first floor elevation was higher than the plan showed and that they should either file an amended plan or face consequences, other consequences.
That's pretty much right. It was more when the property came in for its as-built survey and CVO that it was noticed.
Okay. And I, I know Mr. Pigeon was involved in some of the early discussions on this and I guess our primary charge is to make sure that as a result of the change in the elevation of the first floor, that no damage, well, that the grading could be done appropriately and according to our standards and that there'd be no no drainage issues created by what occurred. And if Mr. Pigeon, and I'm not sure if this is the case of it, if Mr. Pigeon had had drainage problems prior to and he had a gripe with Gerber about the way his lot was graded, I don't know if that's an issue we should be dealing with, that's between him and Gerber. But if it's a result of the first floor being raised on the, on the, on the lot that we're talking about, then I guess it could be an issue and we should do what we can as far as helping Mr. Pigeon. So that being said, how does the board want to go with this thing? I mean, I guess we can give him some more time given the circumstances.
Chuck, I think there's a legal issue in here, so it may be something that, can you hear me okay?
Sure.
It may be something that we need Chris to weigh in, and the reason I'm saying that is number one, it's, it's, it is, might be a past due thing, we don't know. It might be a thing from the past, if it's a thing of the present, how do we deal with the Gerber situation? And I just would like Chris to weigh in on that. Because it's not a planning board per se, it's a policy issue.
Yeah, and that's sort of along the line I was thinking to sort of move this thing along, that if he's not gonna, Gerber's not going to cooperate and submit the plans that we're looking for, that we turn it back to code enforcement and it becomes a legal issue and they take whatever steps they have to take regarding the infraction that they
Yeah, because I, I mean, I don't know what we can do with that while there's three parties involved like that.
Well, rather than getting Chris on the line and trying to resolve tonight, what is the board, go ahead Gary.
This is Gary Humes. I mean, I think, I, we've made, we've talked to them, we've asked them what they want, I think this is, these are unique situations and I think because of the COVID-19 restrictions, that they simply have not been able to do that. I think we owe them the opportunity to do what we asked them to do. And that we have to, I mean, we have to let them come back first, I think, I don't think we can just say, alright, time's up. We're going another route.
Oh, I thought they had come back and said we can't, it was Gerber.
I don't believe they've come back yet.
Okay.
I think they've done the resurvey and come back with a, with a proposed solution to the problem. And I think we owe them that, to do that. I, my recommendation would be to, not just, would be to continue this, but not for the next meeting, but do it a month from now. For the 20, what would that be, the 20?
24th.
Fourth of June. That gives them a month, I think things are starting to open up where, at least in this region here of New York. And, and then we can send them a note and say we're gonna, that the 24th, we're gonna, we're gonna act on it one way or another. That gives them a month to come back.
So I texted Chris and he gave me a call, would you like me to put him on speakerphone now if anybody can talk to him?
Yes.
Chris, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Can you, okay.
We didn't interrupt your, didn't interrupt your dinner, did we Chris?
No.
Okay, hey. We're talking about, thanks for joining us, we're talking about this Old Brookside issue with the lot, the first floor elevation was higher than what the grading plan showed and the, and Gerber was
Yeah, I remember that.
Okay, so we've sort of come to a loggerhead here that Gerber has tried to talk to the adjacent property owner. The adjacent property owner, I guess, is, there's somehow not cooperation between the two, in other words, they haven't gotten together. And so Gerber is not in a position to provide us an amended grading plan that we had requested. So we've been deliberating as to whether this, this, this should go back to the code enforcement department for some sort of action. And, or that we continue our review and give them some more time to submit an amended plan. So and the board has been commenting, Karen sort of feels that, and correct me if I'm wrong Karen, that this has become an issue that is maybe has to go back to code enforcement. Gary has sort of felt that due to the circumstances in our, our role today, that it can work your getting together and people getting together as they should or requested. So therefore, maybe we should give them a continuation, some more time to, to meet and come up with a plan. So what is your suggestion?
Well, let me ask you this, who submitted the application for, I assume, an amended site plan approval?
Eric?
Hold on, I'm gonna pull it up right now.
Is this a Gerber application or was it the newer homeowner?
BME on behalf of Gerber.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, well, it strikes me that this has been going on for a little while. And I think Gerber is, you know, doing their best on it, given the present circumstances, but also with the understanding and the knowledge that nothing's really gonna happen if it, if it can't be worked out. Code enforcement has enforcement has authority and mechanisms by which to compel compliance. The planning board does not. I know that the current homeowners who appeared have been as cooperative as they possibly can and it's a shame that this is falling on them. But it's Gerber's ball to carry and Gerber needs to get their acting gear and make this happen. The planning board cannot make it happen, I can't as planning board or town attorney, I can't make it happen. Gerber needs to make it happen. And, and it seems to me, and granted I'm not in the room, but it seems to me that the only way to do that is through code enforcement's authority.
I'm okay with that, I just wanted to sort it out a little bit.
Well, and I guess what we're saying is
If it appears that, if it appears that, you know, they're a week away from coming to an agreement by which they can all take care of this issue, sure, give it some more time, the planning board can continue it indefinitely. But if continuing it isn't going to result in a resolution, I think code enforcement is the appropriate mechanism.
And the other wrinkle, Chris, is if you remember, it was an adjacent property owner who had come to one of our meetings and said he had drainage problems in his backyard and Gerber, he had asked Gerber to fix it and never got it fixed. And he was sort of tying his issues to this issue of the, of the grading plan not being built. And I, I wasn't totally sure that the two were related. That he, he might have just had a thing for, you know, an issue with Gerber and that's been going on irregardless of how the subject lot was graded. And that seems to be what the hangup is right now, that lot was graded. And that seems to be what the hangup is right now, that that the neighbor has not been willing to talk to Gerber about how to possibly fix this problem. So.
Way away from us.
Well, yeah, maybe we were thinking it too, but.
Yeah.
Well, and I think I think maybe if Gerber is suitably motivated, then they may be more willing to to get this taken care of. My my recommendation is that the planning board sees a resolution that just needs more time, that that by all means brings the, you know, and table that the problem is in existence already. It's not like another couple of weeks is going to change anything. But if it does not look like there's a resolution on the horizon.
No.
And that is the province of code enforcement.
Can I ask you a question? This is Ryan Staychuk. My my question is.
Hi, Ryan Staychuk.
Hi, Chris Nadler. Can we take Gary's idea and continue it for one month concurrently kicking it back and getting code enforcement involved? Can those two things work simultaneously?
Legally, yes, I believe that to be the case. From a from a governmental efficiency standpoint, it may not be the most efficient, but at the same time, I don't think, I think that may be a good way to do it. Get it, get the code enforcement process started and there's no reason Gerber has to pay two application fees and whatnot. But I think the the method is to continue it indefinitely with a referral to code enforcement with the understanding that if code enforcement needs a planning board application denied, then you would do that at your next meeting. And that's a, you know, matter for Chris Jensen to decide how he sees, you know, it to be most efficient. But yeah, I think I think they could operate concurrently, subject, of course, to Chris Jensen's consent. But I think you could do that at this meeting.
Okay, well, how about if we continue, I recommend we continue the deliberations on this application until the 24th of June, but have a drop dead date, so to speak, that if if something is not submitted, it will become the purview of the code enforcement department to take it from there.
I second that. That's okay.
And notify the applicant, certainly this.
Yep.
And I will know that may, you may want to put this in a resolution or however you're doing the continuation. Town code chapter 220-90, I think, Eric and I looked at it earlier today on an unrelated matter, states specifically that violation of a site plan requirement is a violation of the town code.
Okay. So Eric, Lance, could you put that in the in the continuation resolution?
Yeah, that last now therefore be resolved or maybe a whereas prior, I'll add that town code section in there.
Okay.
Does that even really, we can't, we can't approve that resolution until the town code issue is solved then, correct?
No, we can approve the resolution to continue.
For continuance, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about. Yeah, we're talking about a continuance resolution with the another whereas providing for reference to that section of the code that Chris quoted.
I guess a question, another question, this is Gary Humes again. Another possible incentive, and I'm not, I'm not sure, but because that site right now is not in accordance with the plan, are they unable to sell that lot?
It's sold.
Is it sold?
Cassianos are in it.
From a legal standpoint, from a from a town code standpoint, they can sell, any real property can be sold. From a practical standpoint, I would assume that any lawyer would say, no way, don't buy this until unless until any town code.
And I believe that's correct based on what they have told us.
And they have it, they have a temporary CVO.
That's not the lot, the lot next to Cassiano's that is that was built wrong.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, it's the Cassianos who have the lot that.
It's too high, right?
Cassiano's we're looking at, Cassiano's are in lot 39.
No.
There may be, no, they're 38. There may be two issues. The Pigeon lot, which is down here, lot 50.
Yeah, I understand that.
The grading may not have been done right because we didn't track that at the time when he got his approvals. Although when we did for Cassiano, that's when the issue became noticed anyways.
Can I, can I just interrupt and ask? Cassiano's are the newer owners?
Yes.
Yeah.
And my recollection is that the older owners, the lot behind the Cassiano's, is in compliance with the site plan, but they have some drainage issues. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what I think.
Correct. And it's yet to be determined if they're.
Yes.
Go ahead, Chris.
As the chairman stated, those drainage issues may or may not be related to the Cassiano's site plan. Correct?
It's on, it's on the record in an email, though. This is Ryan. There's an email statement from Steve Pigeon dated Thursday, May 7, that this problem was not in place when my house was built. So I don't know how to interpret that, but I feel like there was not a problem until the house was built. But I don't know, because the applicant and nor Pigeon are here to answer questions. That's why I think we should move to continue this.
I think that's a great idea. And Eric can make it clear to Gerber that this is going to be on Gerber. The Cassianos are still under warranty, is my recollection. So Gerber is responsible for them having an actual certificate of occupancy. They can't get an actual certificate of occupancy until their site plan issues are resolved. The planning board's not going to resolve their site plan issues unless and until all the drainage is resolved. So Gerber is going to have to bring a bulldozer out there and fix the drainage. If that involves doing some other stuff on the on the lot to the rear as well, then they're going to have to negotiate that with the owner of the rear lot and make this make both neighbors, both homeowners whole. If Gerber can demonstrate that that guy, that the rear lot owner's drainage issues have nothing to do with the Cassiano's, then that's that's the end of that. But Gerber is on the hook for this and Gerber needs to resolve it. And Gerber needs to be suitably motivated to resolve it. That's my advice.
Okay.
Well said.
Eric, Eric, if you would like to set up a conference call with you, me and Gerber to relay the planning board's desires, I'd be happy to participate in the conversation to help, to assist with motivation.
Okay. Will do.
Chris, and you have a way of motivating. Good for you.
[laughing]
All righty. Well, Chris, I think we can, I think we can limp along without you if you want to beg off. It's up to you whether you want to hang on or not. It's kind of an awkward way to.
I'm, I'm going on the slip and slide. My five-year-old son is demanding it. If you guys need me, please feel free to call back.
Okay, don't get hurt.
Have a good evening, everybody. Nice to talk to you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
All righty. I guess I made a motion, I made a motion that we continue this review until the 24th of June. Subject, well, including that whereas that we talked about, which puts a little more teeth into the continuation. Any other discussion on behalf of the board? Oh, I have a second.
Second.
Okay, motion made by me, seconded by Karen, to continue this to the 24th. No objections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Thank you very much. All right, I am going to exercise chairman's prerogative and move up Alan and Elizabeth Lupton. Because you folks have been on the back end of the agenda for about the last four meetings. So we're going to move you up, give you a promotion. So if you want to unmute yourselves and join us, feel free to. I think where we were on this application was at our last meeting, I think Ryan and myself had a couple concerns regarding the compliance with the shoreline development guidelines. And Alan, you and Sue were going to go back and look at it and come up with some ideas. And I think you came up with one plan, then you came up with a second plan. So why don't we just focus on that second plan, which to me was certainly much better than the first one you submitted. So let's, let's look at the plan of May the 20th. And if you present that, we certainly appreciate it.
Hey, hey, Chuck, just just before you do that, just a point of record for for John, I just want to make note that Bob Lacorse has now joined the meeting.
Thanks, Gary.
Hey, Robert.
I saw you there, so I wanted to say that.
Thanks, Gary.
Okay, very good. So we had heard the concerns the last time relative to trying to break up that front porch with a little more landscaping. Sue also provided a better rendition of what the house looks like when viewed from the lake, so people can get a better appreciation for the fact that there are some rather large proposed trees, which again will block from the shoreline and break up the roofline and things. And again, what you don't see here, which Sue and I went back and forth about adding, but you know, there's that enormous 150-year-old ash tree that's behind the house, which is probably three times the height of the house, which again certainly breaks up more of that vista or that view line. So it makes it less obvious. And so what Sue had proposed doing was again, she accentuated the landscaping that was on either side of the front porch and then added some grass to break up the front porch. We put it up near the porch because if we put it down near the seawall, it's basically going to be below the grade. So in looking at grades and things, it wasn't really going to do a job if we got it too too close to the seawall as compared to the porch. So we kind of thought this is a good compromise. We maintain the step all the ways across the front so someone could still step off, you know, and then just kind of navigate around the ornamental grasses.
Okay. Comments from the board?
It's much, it's lovely. Much better, I thought.
Yeah, I liked it. I like it as well. I'm ready to, ready to move forward.
Yeah, I would agree. I went out and looked at it this weekend and I just had one question, Alan. Is that a tree to your south wall? Is that your neighbor's tree, that big tree?
The tree to the south wall.
On this, on the, on the, yeah, on the south part of your property, there's a big tree there. Is that the neighbor's tree?
Yeah, I think it's got to be on the neighbor's side. I don't think there are currently any trees we've where we show adding a significant, I think it's a tulip tree. I can't read the thing right here. I think it's a tulip that's on the south, and I think it's a pin oak on the north that we're adding. There is a, if you're talking the north side of the property, there is a mature pin oak, and that sits right on the property line. So Bernozaroff and his neighbor, Dr. Reden at the time, planted that together. They planted the row together. And so they both kind of sit right on the property line.
Thank you, Alan.
Ryan, how's it look to you?
I I think that we made, at least Chuck and I made our comments earlier, I feel like, you know, we we lost a lot of landscaping there. And I'm not going to go back on that. I mean, it sounds to me like Gary's happy, Bob's happy, Karen's happy. And if Sue was on, if Sue was on the the call, it seems like we delayed the project for two weeks to have switchgrass planted. And if everybody feels that that meets the shoreline guidelines, then I'm willing to go along with it. I'm not going to belittle this conversation. I can, if if the majority of the planning board is happy, I'll go along and be happy with it.
Well, and my concern was the all the glass along that first floor. And I certainly feel the switchback grass breaks that up. And it still allows Alan to have his ability to step off the porch at any, any, any point along that porch. I had, I think we discussed maybe putting something out at the break wall. So from the lake, it would, it would give that impression, but you know, it sort of break up that that glass again. But having the switchback grass back by the house is is fine with me. And I, I think it's going to add a little bit of privacy also on the porch. And when you're sitting on the porch, and it'll certainly break up that vast vista of glass. So I'm ready to move on. Alan, you have anything else to add before we move on? Excuse me.
No, I think I'm good.
Well, we certainly appreciate your cooperation. You were more than cooperative in allowing us to postpone this until tonight. But I think what we wound up with is a better product than what we had at the last meeting. And it was worth the time, at least from our standpoint, and hopefully for the residents of Canada Day, one of the people who enjoy the the lake. So with that, we have a resolution in front of us. If someone wants to make a motion, I would certainly entertain it.
All right, this is Gary. I will make a motion to approve an amended site plan, VPN 20-003 for Venezia Associates representing Alan and Elizabeth Lupton. You have, how many conditions do we have in there? I think we've been through before. I think they were adequate. So there's 10 conditions.
Correct. I didn't make any additional ones.
And I don't think we've had any discussion other than when we did this the first time.
So. And the references to a plan of May 20, was it? The latest Solinsky plan?
Yeah, I referenced both plans, both the site plan and then the landscaping plan.
Very good. Have a motion from Gary. I'll look for a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bob. Have a motion a second. All in favor of the amended site plan resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Al? All right. Good luck.
Al, before I let you go, did you get Chris Jensen's review of the surety estimate?
I have not seen anything yet. I wasn't sure if it was waiting for today, so I will call him tomorrow.
Okay. All right, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening. All right. On our agenda, we have a application from Richard Quell and Kelly Vestal, owners of property of 3312 Fallbrook. They were seeking a single-stage site plan approval to tear down and rebuild a single-family dwelling. They were subject to the ZBA hearing last week, and the ZBA had requested some additional information prior to acting on the application. So I guess we will have to continue. And I would ask for a resolution. I think there's a resolution in our packet that provides for that continuation to the June 24 meeting after the next ZBA hearing.
I'll move to continue that to the 24th. Is that right? Is that what you said, 24th?
24th, yeah.
24th of June.
And I stress Wednesday, the 24th.
Wednesday, right.
Yeah. I'll remind you again at the end of the meeting, too, because it is a Wednesday again. But anyway, I have a motion from Karen. Give me a second, guys.
Second.
Okay, Bob, got it. Give me a second. So we have a motion a second to continue the Quell Vestal application until the 24th of June. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Eyes have it. Okay, moving right along. Okay, moving right along. Brendan, are you there? Brendan Marks?
I see him. He's there.
He's on mute.
There you go. How are you?
Hey, guy. All right, Brendan's representing Larry Wurges, owner of property at 4963 Waters Edge Drive. And they are seeking a single stage site plan approval for a tear down and rebuild of a single family dwelling. And you were successful at the ZBA the other night. So Brendan, make a presentation as to what you plan on doing after.
Yeah, good afternoon, good evening. So the application is to tear down an existing house. It's, it's dilapidated. It's relatively close to the Waters Edge. It's in the floodplain. It's built on piers and it's, it's at the end of its useful life. So I think he's getting to the plan there. If you go to the existing conditions plan, there you go. So in removing that house, we're going to be removing the utilities on the site. And there's also two walnut trees that would be removed that are behind the house in order to get access to the house to remove it. The, if you go to the proposed planner, they proposed is to replace it with a new 1800 square foot living space residence. It's got a 20, roughly 2,500 square foot footprint with an attached garage further back from the lake, trying to keep it in line with the or to the, with the houses to the north and the south. The new house will have a driveway that connects, a gravel driveway that connects to the garage. We will also connect to the existing utilities on Waters Edge that is a sewer and water or provides stormwater drainage around the house that will connect to an existing or to connect to a proposed drywall on the northeast corner of the site before it overflows into the lake. The house is going to be on a private drive. It's actually public, I guess it's public drive, Waters Edge Drive. There's also a private drive on the western side of the site that connects to the two houses to the north. And then there's a 10 foot right away. That's a public right away along the south side of the property to the lake. In terms of shoreline guidelines, we're enhancing the shoreline views by removing that structure, which is approximately 10 feet off the lake. And you know, setting this new house, which is very good looking. If you look at the rendering, he's got further back from the house. The house is going to have lots of timber, so it'd be a timber frame structure. A lot of earth tones that are going to blend with the neighbors' houses and the, and the surrounding environment. It's a single story house with a full, with a basement, walkout basement. You know, that's, that's kind of the gist of it. And if you guys got questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Eric, do you want to put up the lake view elevation? Okay. So Brendan, as far as the shoreline development guidelines, this, this picture, this rendition doesn't do it much justice. So you got the tree.
We're going to keep the one maple or the one walnut that's there, yep, right there. He had his cursor next to it. We're going to keep that one. And the, the intent was to keep the trees at the, at the rear of the house. However, just after discussions with RG&E, those may have to come down. In that case, we would replace those two at the rear along the private right away with trees of similar size or similar species. Not walnut, probably another deciduous tree with meeting the minimum sizes required by the town. The, you know, this terms of shoreline guideline, we do have a little bit of plantings along the garage, between the garage and the house. You know, I, I was opening up to this board. If they want to request some additional plantings along the front of the house to buffer it off of the lake, that's, that's more than acceptable to, by the owner. The, the big thing we've done though is remove that, that old structure that's right on the water, that, that looks very poor at the current time and set it back with a new structure that looks like this.
Yeah, this is Bob Brennan. I, I think some softening would be good in front of that house. It's a lot of frontage there, pretty tall, two story coming out of the basement there.
Yeah.
Only that one tree is not going to soften it too much.
Well, that's, that is a very mature walnut. Like to come down. I think it's got to be at least 24 inches at the wall. I'm surprised you don't have, you, you have your pictures of the shoreline, don't you, Eric?
Yes, but I'll have to pull them up real quick.
Bob, in terms of what you, you mentioned, I would be glad, we would, we would be open to adding, you know, five, six deciduous shrubs in the front yard. And the, and the landscaping bed that would surround those to soften it from the lake.
Yeah, that I think would definitely help. I'm trying to picture your new house. Would it be somewhat? I'm looking at a picture there on your screen. Is it somewhat the same basement level as that house on the left?
Yes, yep, the finished floors, there you go. The finished floor elevations are roughly the, the same, within a few inches.
You have to bear with me. I didn't have this one labeled.
Can we, so this is, this is Ryan. Can you talk about the roof drainage? And I guess, I'm looking at the, when I looked at the silhouette from the side, it looks like the roof drainage closest to the lake is like a tiered system to where the gutters would tie in. Have you guys considered putting that drainage towards the road and following the gutters that way and maybe where the soil stockpile is? Have you guys, did you guys consider maybe like a, maybe like a rain garden or something besides the, the well that's right near the lake there with the overflow?
So, yeah. If you go towards the private drive from the, from the garage, it actually comes uphill relatively quickly. There's probably six or seven feet between the edge of the garage and the private right away on the west side of the property. The, we've got two curtain drains in there. We're actually raising grade on the garage a little bit. We got two curtain drains in there just for, under subsurface water to stop water problems in the garage. But also those roof leaders from the garage and the back of the north side of the house, we're going to, we're going to splash those to grade. And that's going to be into a grass swell that's going to go overland flow to the drywall. So that grass swell is actually a DEC approved practice that allows the water to run over lawn areas in which also filters the runoff and also allows for absorption into the dirt, into the soil.
You don't really think there's that much absor, absorption with that soil though? Do you, I mean, is, is there, is there going to be issues with that existing house being so close to the north there? Right near that, where the gas meter is splashing onto a splash block and just looking overland flow? I mean, what, what, what would, is that drywall just going to be for that drainage? Underground drainage then?
The, the drywall will be for the, the leader, the roof downspouts on the south side of the house and on the east side of the house, the lakeside. There's 10 foot between the, the north wall of the house and the property line. The swell bottom width of the swell is going to be four feet. So that gives us three foot on either side to grade up to, to grade. It's going to be relatively shallow swell. It'll be about 12 inches deep. We have good luck with, with the grass in the, the, I mean, the soils are hard around the lake. That's something we can't really change. But the, the grass does take that first flush that, that, the average annuals rainfall, which is half inch or, you know, or less. And that's really what we're trying to treat. We can't, even in the DEC regs, we don't try to treat that much of the 10 year storms, even in commercial sites. I mean, those are just storms that we can't control, but are not very, they don't contribute a lot to the pollution. It's really the average annual rainfall we're looking for.
What kind of roof, what kind of roof are you guys proposing?
That's a good question for Ty, if he's on the phone.
I'm here. How you doing? I'm Ty Allen from New Energy Works. So the thought right now is that potentially a metal roof, you know, it's going to be contingent on budget. But there's a, there's a thought that we could do a metal roof, possibly asphalt.
Well, the issue is, and we just dealt with this a couple, a little while ago, if we keep, if we kind of continue to put asphalt right on the lake and we're going to continue to just allow overland flow, I mean, eventually that asphalt is going to make it into the lake.
Yeah, I think the, the goal is to do metal and that's the preference. And that's the way we're going to try to head. And I, you know, I'd, I'd be surprised if it doesn't go that way. Let's put it like that.
Well, I mean, I guess I'd be more comfortable if we're going to splash it with a metal roof if we can condition that. I don't know if we, I, I don't know if we want to get into conditioning roof types though.
Well, I, I, I think it's applicable because it has to do with drainage. So and, and protecting the lakes. I think it's a reasonable condition, Ryan.
Okay, thanks Chuck.
Ty, how, how high is the house? I mean, did you calculate the mean, the mean height to the, to the peak? I know that was a question, somebody in their reviews question as to how high it was.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not a very tall house. I'm trying to remember what the number was. In fact, if you look at the neighboring structures, it's, it's, it's overall kind of mean height is, is considerably less than the house on the left. I mean, you see, you can essentially see three stories on the left and one on the right is behind the tree. It's similar. I don't recall off the top of my head what the height was. Maybe Kyle, who's on the call, can shoot me a text and if he can figure that out quick. But, but speaking, you know, relative to the, to the buildings around it, you can actually see the one on the right now is considerably lower. It's only really a two-ish plus story exposure versus three or more as you see on, on the right hand side there. So the profile, one of the thoughts here was we're trying to keep the profile to the lake really low. Like the clients don't have any need to make this ostentatious or larger and more grandiose than it needs to be.
And it does line up with the, the homes on the right and the left, right? As far as the setback from the lake?
Yeah, so what we did, we actually could be much closer to the lake theoretically, but we took a line essentially from the corner of the house on the north to the roughly the corner of the house on the south and sort of use that line to give ourselves the positioning for the exterior eastern facing wall of the house so that those sight lines are maintained. It feels natural with the shoreline and that it's comfortable in terms of its setting. So that was a deliberate, and also preserves the, the views.
Trees, yeah.
Yeah, trees and views, not only from the south to the north, but predominantly from that neighbor to the north to the south. The house that's there right now really blocks their view and it'll be nice for that to be, it's an eyesore. It would be nice for it to be gone for everybody.
So back to the photo from the lake. So all the vegetation that is shown there, again, they, they all will remain. You know, Brendan said some of the trees out front or in the back, let's call it the, the house will have to go.
Yes, yeah, that one big tree you see out front there, that's like the, the, on the left, yep. That's, that's actually in the public right away. So that tree is going to stay. The ones behind the house will be, will have to be removed. But we're going to plant a, you know, a three inch deciduous tree back in their place. Which, I mean, that's RG&E's orders is to, because they're actually an overhead power line that crosses the site rate, rate where our garage is now. So we're going to relocate that overhead line back. Oh, there you go. It's actually, that overhead line supplies the properties to the north, both of them. So we're moving that back to the, closer to the private right away and which we were hoping to fish it between those trees, but RG&E just got back to us and said, nope, they have to go. So we'll plan to plant two deciduous trees, similar in nature in that same location.
Are they okay with it being the same location or would they like, like it move further from the line?
Yeah, we'll have to set it off, the one especially that's on the north side there. Will have to be closer probably to the house, probably right where it says that concrete washout area. You know, I can't, you know, 10 years down the road, RG&E is probably going to butcher them up pretty good, but um, you know, that goes.
Can the silt fence be placed to the west of that tree you're trying to save? And stay away from those roots?
Yes.
You know what I'm saying? Can you make that a condition, Lance, please? That the silt fence is placed strategically to protect that tree's roots?
Yep, that's a good, that's a good catch. I should have caught that.
Yeah, I'll add that.
That same as that drain line too. We rewrote that drain line. So that drain line is for the foundation drain that goes down through there.
All right, this is, this is Gary. I got a couple of questions. First off, this, can you talk a little more about this public right away? Is that on this person's property or is it on the adjoining?
Far as we know, town owned 10 foot strip there. It's no, we don't actually, it's not in our deed. We, we've looked at this quite a bit. So the Waters Edge Drive continues, connects down to the Canada Day Lake. Surveyed the property, this property that we're working on. We also surveyed the property on the south side for, oh, a few years back for whatever transfer property. But neither deeds includes that strip of land, so it's actually public land. The, the right away on the west side of the site that connects to the north is privately owned. That is our property. But we have, the neighbors of the north have an easement over it saying that they have, are allowed access across it.
All right, is that, I did notice, is that easement number or whatever it is on the, on the plan?
That easement is the 20 foot right away easement.
The, the, on the west side that goes to the north? Is that on there?
Yeah, you got to go back up to the plan above.
Well, it's, just make sure it is, because if.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be one, well, he just cruised past a little bit. It's on the references there in this map.
Okay, and any construction that you're doing on that south side, on the south side, I guess, is that going to, I guess my question, is that going to impact or provide any drainage issues or anything on that right, on the right away in the south? Going down to the.
No, we minimize their impact to just the driveway and grading on the downhill side for that, in that 10 foot right away, which is, that's allowed, assuming it's a right away. But we haven't done any grading on that 10 foot strip below the driveway.
Okay, all right. And then I guess my last comment is, is I agree with, I guess Chuck and Bob. I, I, I think we need to have some landscaping on the, on the east side, the lakeside. I don't think the way the plan is shown tonight would be in compliant with the shoreline guidance. And I would feel uncomfortable, given what we just went through on the Luptons property. We basically held them up for, and we didn't hold them up, but you know, we held up the amended site plan for a month because we wanted to make sure we had proper landscaping in accordance with the shoreline guidance. I would not feel comfortable approving this plan tonight without seeing a landscape plan that we could then approve and, and, and bounce against the guidelines to make sure that we were satisfied. My opinion.
Okay, I mean, they, we're open to a condition with the, you know, say 30% of the linear frontage of the property having a landscape bed and, and six or so deciduous shrubs on the, on the front of the house to meet that shoreline guidelines, if that's what we like. We, or if that's what the board would like to see. The, the only option, the other option for this house rebuild was to rebuild the house in place. You know, so tearing down that house, setting it back was a big step in the shoreline guideline. You know, so repairing down that house, setting it back was a big step in the shoreline guidelines.
All right, and, and I can appreciate that and I understand that. I think it's a good-looking house, but I think, but it's not, I, I just don't think it's in compliance with the shoreline guidance right now without having any, any additional screening or anything, you know, in the, in the front part, what I call the front, at the lakeside um, of that house. And I, and conditions are great, but I think we've, this board is kind of now, I think, set a precedent, particularly for lakeside residential, uh, lakeside houses that we want to see a landscaping plan um, that we can evaluate against the shoreline guidance rather than just saying, having a condition in there. We don't know how you're going to satisfy that condition. And I think we, I, I think we, we need to see it, see something. I'll let, I'll let other members.
No, you're, you're right, Gary, because if you do, if you do it as a condition, then the prerogative is on myself and Eric to say, okay, is that what the board wanted? And if it's not totally what the board wanted, then, then the two of us are sort of left, left, uh, responsible for it. So I would agree with you. I'd much rather see a, a defined, hard, hard plan showing where the landscaping is going to occur. You can show where the trees are going to go out toward the, uh, toward the right-of-way, toward the street and, uh, uh, the correction of the silt fence that we mentioned. This could all be, all be included in an amended plan, uh, to be submitted and considered, uh, by the, uh, by the board. How's the rest of the board feel?
I agree with that Chuck.
I'm good. I'm good with that.
Okay, was, is there anything else that, uh, Brennan should be aware of, Brett and Ty should be aware of regarding this application? So they don't come back in two weeks and, uh, find out there are other things. Uh, the driveway, what's the driveway made up of, Brennan?
Gravel.
Gravel?
Yep.
Okay. And you would be in proving it, I guess, where that notch is, that's where the existing gravel ends on the water's edge?
Yeah.
Okay, so you just pick it up from there and go with gravel. I, I know the ECB had a concern regarding permeable paving. Uh, of course, if you have a gravel driveway, that's about as permeable as you can get. Anything else, uh, that Brennan should be aware of?
No.
To look out for, uh, just looking over some of the, uh, comments from the, the other agencies that reviewed this, uh, the County Planning Board had recommended denial. Uh, they had mentioned something about a swale issue.
They recommended denial of the variance, I thought, today.
Yeah, it was the variance.
I know, and so, some of the other applications, they came back with a more recent recommendation to, uh, sort of no comment, but on this one, I think it was holding as a denial. Anyway, where you're finding that, uh, uh, the ECB was concerned about the shoreline development guidelines. Uh, Jim Fletcher had some issues regarding the water service. Uh, I heard nothing, we heard nothing from the fire, nothing from Kevin. Uh, there was a neighbor who had written an email, I think it was the Hilarzki's. Did you see that Brennan?
Yeah, he is in support of the application. Both the neighbors were in support.
Um, you're going to check out the height of the house, confirm that. Lance, anything, uh, in your review letter that we should, uh, discuss or make Brennan aware of?
No, I, I believe the board's covered, uh, most of the comments similar to what was in the MRB letter. Um, bear with me, I'm trying to open it up so that I can reference something if necessary.
It's on the board now.
Yep. No, I have it open. I just had to get to it. Um, no, I think we talked about the drainage wells. We talked about the roof runoff, uh, being collected and, and discharged to those, uh, dry wells if possible. Um, we talked about the shoreline guidelines, which was a concern both of the board, um, and at PRC level. And we talked about the construction staging area due to its proximity to the neighbors and the construction in the front. We asked that that area be identified on the plans just to further ensure that we're not going to be impacting the neighbors during construction. So I believe the board has highlighted those areas and I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, we've went through his, we've read through his comments and we're, we're confident we can address them.
Good, good. Uh, Eric, if you'd go back again to the elevation view from the lake. Uh, so we have, the board gives, uh, these folks some, uh, specifics. Is that, is that a retaining wall there to the lower right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I definitely think you can soften that up with some.
That's what I was thinking.
For sure. And, uh, a lot of windows and you heard the discussion on the last application, uh, there's not much you can do short of putting 30-foot trees in, uh, to, to, to block the windows up top, but maybe across the, the frontage there, some shrubs and so on.
Absolutely.
And you got another wall on the, uh, because that's the south side.
Yep.
So, uh, any other recommendations from the board as to, uh, how they can, uh, improve on the, uh, the look here? Okay, well, hopefully you have enough, uh, enough guidance to, uh, come back with a plan. Uh, we'd be looking at our June 9th meeting uh, for you folks to take action, final action. So, uh, in the meantime, if I could have a motion to continue this to the June 9th meeting, I'd appreciate it.
I'll make that motion to, uh, extend to the June 19th, 9th meeting.
Got a motion from Bob, second from Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I didn't ask anybody in the public that was on the call if they had any comments, uh, since you were good to know. If someone's out there that has a, a comment or a question as application, please speak up now or we'll move on. Okay, I didn't think so.
We'll bring, we'll bring plans for signature next time.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
They gotta be spot-on plans.
They will be.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, fellas. Alrighty, we're moving on to, uh, and that's the associates representing the Richard and Kimberly Gray, owners of property at 4959 Island Beach Drive, and they're seeking the single-stage site plan approval to tear down and rebuild a single-family dwelling. And it's a change to a previous plan that was approved, was that about a year ago, Eric?
Almost exactly.
Yeah, it was May of 19th, the 2019. So, um, they, uh, once they moved, they're essentially moving the building to the north. Or to the north, yeah. And, uh, just sort of sliding it. And it did involve a, uh, a variance from the ZBA which they received last week. And is Anthony or the Mr. Gray on the, uh, Mr. or Mrs. Gray on the call?
Well, Rocco work.
Rocco.
Hey Chuck.
How you doing?
Hi, I, how you folks doing?
We are getting by. We're getting by. We've.
I've been watching. You're doing real well.
All right, well, I'd much rather see you in person, but, hey, you look good yourself. All right, you got your readers on?
Got my readers on.
Okay, tell us about, uh, what you're doing out at.
Okay, so you, you folks have seen this, like Chuck said, about a year ago. And, you know, we went through the whole process and, uh, just recently, you know, when they were getting ready to build this, the owner decided that, um, we, we, we were within parameters and we got approval to build it. We got the, you know, the variances and everything we needed. But he didn't like it because it wasn't balanced on the lot. We were, we were a little further south. So that, so that he, he decided before he built that he wanted to come back to the board, come back to the town and get it re-permitted to be more in line with the center, centering the house, not a lot. So, so that then created a five-foot setback on the north. Um, something similar on the south. And, um, be like I, like, like Chuck said, we went to the zoning board. And we got their blessing. So we're back here for a reapproval of this site that, that you did last year about this time.
Okay, I'll open it up to the board, uh.
All right, this is Gary.
Sure, go.
Couple of questions for me. Uh, one is about the, the roof drains. It looked, it looked to me uh, that there, there's a couple, on, on the north side, it's just going to splash block, but on the south side, it's actually going into a, a drainage pipe that's going to go into a, a swale or down to the, that toward, toward the lake. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct, Gary, yep.
And is there any reason or any reason why you couldn't tie the north uh, drainage into that same pipe on the south side? So it all goes, or is it, is that not desired? Or can you explain their rationale?
It's just, it, it, it's just bringing it all the way across there and, you know, concentrating the load at the lake. It was, it made more sense because, you know, most of the roof, um, compared to what was there, were handling. So we, we don't have to retain or, or try to hold back any of the, uh, original water. So, uh, when you do the calculations, you, you kind of works like you could put half, half of the roof to splash box and be within the state law. That, that's the best answer. I mean, we could tie it over there, um, if the, if the board still choose, but, um, we did it this way because, um, we had the room to do it.
Okay, I, I guess I'd ask Lance for, uh, a, a comment or an opinion on that, whether, I mean, I could see if you tie it all to the south, there might, that might be just too much water to go down on the south.
Yeah, it concentrates it, Gary, and I didn't want to do that.
So I, I guess I refer to, to Lance on, on that design, whether he thinks that's going to, that's okay?
Yeah, I guess, uh, looking at the plans and, um, are part of our original review, that was something we considered. I think that sometimes as reference, when you're tying it all in into one pipe size, uh, you may overwhelm that system and its outfall, which is right by the lake. I think splitting it up does a better job. You're doing 50/50. It gives us a little bit of the, the overland swell, uh, some potential for infiltration, um, on the north side, whereas the south side will be all collected and, and also collecting it all just expedites how fast it gets to the lake. Um, because it's going through a, a hard system as opposed to she flowing overland. So, uh, I'm, I'm okay with it as is, but if the board does prefer to have it being filtered, um, through a closed system as opposed to overland, then as, as Rocco mentioned, it could be done. But I believe this is the better of the two options.
All right, um, if, if you believe it's better, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna tell you to change it. Um, and then, uh, my last question has to do with the, on the south side, it says there's a proposed, uh, retaining wall. And I was wondering what that retaining wall, what that material is? Is that wood? Is it concrete? Is it face stone? Um, how high is it? And should we have a, a detail on the drawings or something?
So it's, so if you look on the, on the drawing, it does have a bottom and a top of a wall.
Okay.
On the east side, it's a foot tall. On the west side, it's about, uh, maybe three foot tall. So it's, it's more like a, a curve than anything.
Gary, and for the board's record, we did in the MRB letter a request that a detail of the retaining wall be provided, as we have with all retaining walls.
Okay.
A lot of, a lot of times they get provided, um, as part of, um, a, a separate sheet submission.
Okay, do we know what, what's the, is that going to be a stone?
Concrete. We, we want to build it on concrete.
Yeah, okay. All right, yeah. As long as it's in the MRB letter that we have a detail of that, I think that's what I was looking for. All right, those, those are my only questions.
Okay, anybody else from the board have comments?
Yeah, I guess I would echo Gary's concerns about the roof drainage and similar to the last, um, applicant. Rocco, this is Ryan. Do you have a roof type? Hey man, do you have a, do you have a roof type figured out yet?
Uh, you know, the, the contractor does that and we don't, we're not privy to that at this point, but it, it's about half and half is the way it's going to work out. But I, I really believe it's better in this application because we have the swale from the front coming around and we got that side swale and we're building that side swale to let it run over, overland and give it a chance to infiltrate. I just, I'm just afraid as an engineer to dump all that water into that one pipe and, and upcharge the whole thing, you know, because if you're going to take the water that's in the swale from the splash box, you might as well take the water that comes from the front of the house, put it in there. And by the time you get that done, you're looking at pretty substantial out, outflow. So, you know.
I mean, I don't, I don't mind the splash block that much. I think, I mean, you know, same with what we just heard. Are you okay conditioning with the, with the metal roof just to kind of reduce the pollution of the asphalt roof?
Like, you know, I don't think that a metal roof is anything I've discussed with my clients, so I would be hesitant to do that.
Do you think there's a place for a for a rain garden here?
I don't think there's a need for a rain garden there, but there's certainly, we could squeeze one in if we want, but, um.
I, I remember talking about this at the, the last time we saw it, that the under, the drains go to that rip wrap, don't they? And they come out of that rip wrap and go right into the lake. Isn't that right?
That's correct.
Now, I think that we discussed a rain garden there too, but it's just that there's so much with the, I mean, we got, we got to start making steps to kind of reduce that, the, the, the amount of pollution going into the lake there. And if it's, I'm okay with splash blocks. I think that the, the metal roof will kind of reduce the amount of petroleum products going into the lake. I think it's.
We, we haven't discussed a metal, we haven't, Ryan, we haven't discussed, discussed at all about metal roof. So, you know, and we, and we didn't do that. I mean, we had discussion the last time, but we kind of all agreed that, you know, we would leave it like it. Well, we haven't, and this, from what you approved a year ago, we haven't changed any elements of the design. So, so, so I'm just a little taken back why we're, why we're getting caught up on this at this point.
It, it's only to be consistent and fair to everybody, include the, you know, the, the applicants from just before and uh, in, in light of new information about how the asphalt roofs are deteriorating over time and how it's going into the lake. I mean, this is the only opportunity that, that the town has to kind of, to maybe right a pass miss. I might, I mean, I would take responsibility for missing that last time. I think it's something that we want to kind of see if we can't get the rain garden that kind of reduce the pollution going into the lake, then maybe a, a metal roof is one option to kind of mitigate that.
Not to be sarcastic or anything, but have you gone around and looked at any of the rain gardens that, that you guys have approved over the last five, 10 years?
Uh, I've been told to not go near the properties unless we have permission.
Okay, all right. So if you did, which I do, you'll see that 90% of them fail because the purpose of a rain garden is to detain water during the rain. And they're designed to be very fluid and the water goes through them real quick. Which means it stays there for an hour or two and it drains out. And it reduces that, that quick burst of water that goes into the lake. So it certainly works in that regard. Where they fail is the fact that when there isn't any rain, which the summer, there's not a lot of rain, there might be a couple, there might be five events that it works. But after those events and when it's not raining, when you try to grow water plants in a rain garden, which you're supposed to do, they die. So essentially what happens is people grow grass in them and they're not a rain garden at all. They're just a shallow depression. Uh, they're aggravating and so, so not to change, you know, the culture of what we're doing with the rain gardens, but I find the rain gardens to be long-term ineffective and most of them are not even being utilized the way they were envisioned. They sound good, but not sure.
Right.
It would add much to the project.
Ryan, how much space is necessary for that drainage to deposit any asphalt, single, single sediment, I guess?
The best way to, the best way, the best.
I would say that this property meets that 25-foot setback from the lake that's in the town code for structures. Certainly that side of it.
No, the issues, the issues, I'm, I think that, and Lance can chime in, but if we're tying in, right, if we're going to tie some of the gutters in to underground drainage and it's in that asphalt, there's no question in my mind, once it starts deteriorating, if it's going to go into the gutters and then down the gutters with rainfall, it's going to continue to keep going down. And it's going to end up working its way right, I mean, we're directly leading right into the lake with that, with that underground drainage. Um, and so I, you know, it's, it's the tying in, but then it's also the. Um, and so I, you know, it's, it's the tying in, but then it's also the asphalt. I mean, anyone that has an old, I mean, this is, I'm not making this up, this is, this is real stuff. And I don't know the exact velocity necessary to carry asphalt particles.
Well, first, first of all, first of all, I would suggest if you're really concerned about that, the best way for, and, and this is not rocket scientist, this is gonna be kind of maybe my opinion. The best way to keep the particles from getting in the lake is to let it go out in the grass because the grass will certainly catch them. It'll slow it down enough for the grass to catch them. So, so what I would suggest in this instance is to disconnect the roof drains on the south and let them run ac- across a swell also. Um, if, but, but, but it's hard to design. I think we're designing for, first of all, putting these rain gardens in, we're designing for quote unquote, quote non-quote uh small water. But we just haven't addressed, you know, uh bad roof material getting within the, the runoff. So, so I just, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure how to handle it, to be honest with you.
I gotta push back on the rain garden thing, Rocco. I know that there's additives for, for soil that you can add into those, to the, to the soil to make those plants um successful. There's a significant amount of science behind them and, and maybe that's where we need to start requiring landscape certified landscape designers. I mean, that's, that's an issue with maintenance. And there's no question, I agree a hundred percent, that it requires significant maintenance on behalf of the landowner.
It has to be watered, it has to be watered all the time or it's not gonna, it's not gonna be successful.
Or the soil neat, with something that our planning board does not talk about is mending the soil appropriately to certain percentages. So we're a little bit behind the ball in that, but if, when you mend the soil, there's, there's calcu, there's many uh things that come out, um science that comes out of Cornell that where you can actually mend the soil to have certain particulates in it that absorb water and allow the plants to, to live. For example, some municipalities require that any tree planted have a specific mended soil uh ratio. We don't do that in the Canada. So I think that we're just trying to make incremental steps on trying to protect the lake as much as we can. And so the rain gardens are certainly very important. They're, New York State supports those. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to find a good balance here, and I think that metal roofs do that.
Well, so, so does a rain garden, so does a rain, rain garden. I don't want the board to think that I'm not a proponent of, 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 of rain gardens. I, I actually like them. And I think they are very effective. I think they, they withhold and they hold back contaminants. They certainly take care of that roof material a, and they work. I mean, they absolutely hold back water like they should. If there's a way that we can assure that they're gonna continue to function and be alive with plants, I'm all for it. But I think it's something that we have to follow up on and, and.
Sprinklers, man. Gotta use sprinklers. People gotta water them. You gotta, you know, you gotta mend the soil. There's.
Yeah, but they don't see, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the.
Products that you can have that help keep the roots alive.
A lot of the, a lot of these folks aren't there all the time. They're just summer.
Oh, that's not our fault. That's not the planning board. We're not in control of that.
Yeah, but, 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 but my.
If you want it to be there in the long run, you have to consider who is actually doing it.
That's not our role to make sure that people, that, that's not our role to make sure that people maintain their property. That's not, I disagree, Eric. Yeah, we don't take, what if these people sell the house in two months? Are we supposed to take that? That's not true. I, I just, I push back on that.
The planning board does.
If they're half of the year, we're supposed to, that's not how we make policy in the, in the town of Canada. Well, that's not true.
Yeah, but we can't.
Actors.
We, we can't be approving, I mean, it's silly to continue to approve rain gardens and go with the idea that it's working when if you send out Chris Johnson and inspect them all, you'd find that ninety percent of them, they still are functioning, but they don't look like a rain garden. They're not attractive. They're typically overgrown. People throw junk in them and they're just, they're just an eyesore.
They need to maintain those.
Yeah, but who's gonna, who's gonna make them do it?
The landowner.
The landlord's got no, once then, listen.
Like every landowner's supposed to maintain their property. I, 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 I mean, that's the way it's supposed to work. I.
So here, 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 here's the story. I, I'm the landowner. I want to tear it down and rebuild. I tell them I gotta build a rain garden. I yell at the engineer because he designed a rain garden. It's gonna cost me fifteen thousand dollars. Okay, now I got my planning board approval because I decided I'd put it in. Then I spent the fifteen thousand to put it in. Then I get my C of O and guess what? I could care less about the rain garden at that point. And that's, that's not my opinion. That is what's happening in the real world. That's all I'm trying to do is make that point. I'm not, I don't want to argue with Ryan, but that's what I see.
All right, all right, all right, all right. I'm stepping in, guys. All right, uh, this is something we're not gonna resolve tonight, so. Uh, a, and certainly if we want to talk about, you know, philosophy of uh what type, type of roofs are the best roof to put on a lakefront house, we can certainly talk about that. If it is an asphalt roof, should the provisions to somehow um distill the sediment out or the, the, the aggregate before it goes into the lake, that's something, if it's not run over, over grade. But in, again, we're not gonna come up with a solution tonight on that. So as far as this particular application, I would like to hear specific comments to it. Uh, Ryan, how about the, the option of uh the southern roof drain stumping out on grade? That would certainly help because then it would infiltrate uh or run across the grass and there would be some uh uh desultation occurring as it runs toward the lake. Would that be, would that help the situation?
I'm, I'm just trying to be consistent with the, with the applicant literally thirty-seven minutes ago, which was almost a similar site plan. And I think, and, and it was not a problem at all with the, with the metal roof. So there's, I, I thought that that would be the easiest solution to reduce the pollution. There seemed to be no drop, pushback on that end.
Well, in that case, there wasn't. In this case, there may be. And I, I don't think we have the prerogative to require what kind of roof uh they put on the, okay? So all we can do, if they do go with a non-metal asphalt roof or shingle roof, that any, any pollutants that may result from runoff on that roof somehow be mitigated uh so they do not go into the lake. Now, this, this issue of, of asphalt uh grit getting into the lake, is that something that's come up recently? Uh, uh, Kevin, Kevin has not commented on any of these applications along the lake.
Let's ask Kevin that because I think as a planning board, we certainly can require non-pollutants be used in construction materials, non-lake pollutants that are known.
Okay, well, maybe.
I mean, I'd like Kevin to weigh in on that.
That would be a, a good question. I've never heard Kevin say, I'm concerned about the type of roof that's being put on these particular uh buildings and.
Oh, but look what happened with fertilizers, you know, all of a sudden phosphate was a big thing.
Maybe.
Ask him, is, are there some things that are toxic, cancer-producing, pollute, polluting the lake? And if so, you know, is asphalt one of them and what can we do?
So, so, okay, so Karen, I would ask the question of all the board members. I know some of you are living houses that are new, some living houses that are older or moderate age.
Which is totally irrelevant.
No, it isn't. And it's, and you have splash box. Do you, do you go out on your lawn and see?
It doesn't matter if I live in a, in a hut. My problem is I'm here to protect our lake. And the lake needs to be protected at this point.
But my point is, the point I was trying to make with that analogy was, do you see particles from your roof in your lawn? I don't.
I, I'm not going to answer that because again, I don't, it's irrelevant what I see, but I know what my role is as a planning board member.
I know it, it is relevant though, because if they're not coming off the roof and they're not showing up on the lawn, they're certainly not getting into the lake. So I think it is relative to the conversation.
It is, but Kevin is an expert, so I would like to ask an expert, not just somebody who lives there.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, for, for the record too, just want to be clear that every application that comes before you guys in the Canada Lake watershed does get referred to Kevin Olveny and, and, and we rec, we, we identify whether or not he has comments or does not have comments pertaining to these applications and our findings.
Okay.
And in this particular application, there was no comments.
And we can certainly ask him that question though.
Most certainly, most certainly.
Concerned. We just want to ask him that particular question.
Hmm, as it relates to this application, I guess, I just to stay on point, if, if some of the concern is discharge of roof particles to the lake, um and again, I don't know, I, I, I haven't seen many studies on it, but typically rip wrap is put into one, slow down the velocity of water when it comes out to, to eliminate erosion control issues and sediment runoff issues. It holds back sediment. So I would imagine if it's capable of holding back sediment, why wouldn't it be able to hold back roof particles? That's one question that I don't know the answer to without doing the study, but I just pointing that out. That rip wrap in this case is shown. Um, question number two is, if the board is in favor of disconnecting the roofs on this side of the, the house, I would think that we would be concerned with potential swell on that side. I don't know how much room they have there with the pipe and some of the other features that are shown. Uh, we may just want to make sure that Rocco's capable of, of designing a plane that shows a swell on that side.
After I said that, I looked at it, it's gonna be tight, you know, it's not gonna be easy.
Yeah, that side could, looks like it could be pretty difficult to do that.
Yeah, it'd be almost impossible.
Um, the other thought that I had was what if we cut the pipe back shorter, but then you have a retaining wall uh at the back end that they're trying to, to get through. Um, so you may have another problem by cutting it back um and then having a daylight earlier before the lake. Uh, opt, one of the only other options other than what's probably hitting here is possibly, as discussed earlier, is maybe you have the roof discharged directly to a rain garden on the south side, small rain garden. Whatever filtrates in, filtrates in, whatever doesn't, seeps through and enters a perforated pipe that ultimately discharges in the exact location that you have shown. I think that would be.
I, I'm willing to do whatever the board wants to do.
That might be, that might be an alternative if, if, if the applicant, you were willing to go with that route. Discharge to something like that on that side, let it seep in and then whatever, whatever kid doesn't seep in would overthrow through, through your proposed perforated pipe and, and enter the system as shown.
If the board so chooses.
Uh, certainly sounds like a solution to me. I, I do agree that probably the rip wrap would act as a decilding. And, and roof, and, and roof grit uh really doesn't start to show up until the roof gets older. I mean, when it, when a roof's new, you better have an, you better not have asphalt coming off the roof because then you got a poor job and you're gonna lose your roof in a couple of years. But it's usually toward the end of a roof's lifetime. The, you start to see the, the grit and the asphalt start to peel off.
Yeah, I like that solution, Lance. That's a good one.
This is, this is Gary, just, just, just for, for the record, I think, I think the rip wrap probably will hold whatever sediment comes through. And I'd be, I'd be happy to uh go ahead and approve the plan as is. But if the board, uh, my other fellow board members feel they need a, a rain garden or something else, I can go along with that as well. But I'm, I'm willing to approve it.
Well, for my two cents, I'm fine with the roof wrap too.
I'm good with it.
Okay, well, uh, okay, that's, that's the drainage issue. I guess the only thing we, we really didn't talk about or spend any time would be the the landscaping. Uh, Ted Collins had submitted a landscape plan. You just had it up a couple of minutes ago. Eric, if you can put it up, uh, I think it's essentially the plan from the last year's application. Uh, all we've done is move, you know, slid the house to the north and along went the landscaping. So nothing has changed. I think we were all appreciative of the, the work that Ted had done on this at the time and uh I really don't see any, uh, any changes that would be required as far as the landscaping and its compliance with the shoreline development guidelines. Anybody else have any thoughts? Alrighty, uh, while we're deliberating, uh, let me just go through some of the third-party reviews. Uh, the county public works, uh, they responded an email on five-ten. They said, no trees in the easement. Uh, I think that was something they commented last year too, and I think that's been complied with. Uh, the county planning board, uh, they didn't approve or deny uh based on their May eighteenth correspondence. Uh, the ECB had mentioned the rain garden and they're also want to make sure the shoreline development guidelines were covered. Uh, Mr. Fletcher, uh, again, concerned about water connections. Fire chief, no comments. No comments from Kevin. And uh, they did get their ZBA approval. Uh, and that should be noted on the plan, which I think is one of the conditions of approval, right, Lance? It is. I saw it, I saw it on the resolution. Uh, Lance, do you have anything else other than what we talked about, uh, concerned you? He's trying to get to his mouse to unmute.
Sorry, I've been talking and I was muted. All right, uh, no, I don't have, I don't have any additional comments at this time.
Did your voice have, did your voice have comments on the rain garden? Is that what they were asking you about? All right, well, Lance had given us a letter on the, the eighteenth of May, which is certainly part of the record. And do we have to do a, a seeker on this, seeing that this is an amended plan, guys?
So, it's, being that it's a type-two action, probably not. But I did it for the record because it was changed and it moved and moved the app, it, it, it wasn't like um a removal of a shed or something small. It was the whole house. So the last couple that we've done, I've just re-identified that it's a type-two. But for the record, it's a type-two action. You don't have to do any action on it.
Anybody else from the board have any comments? Uh, if not, we can, if it makes Lance feel better, uh, we can do do the seeker resolution also. So I would look for a motion for both the seeker resolution as a type-two action as well as the amended site plan uh as uh, as shown on the last revision was April eighth of twenty-twenty. Do I have such a motion?
Alec. A motion, Chuck, uh, to accept Fenencia Association representing Richard and Kimberly Gray at four-nine-five-nine Island Beach Drive, CPN zero-two-nine dash one, a single site stage approval with seeker resolution at the same time with, I don't know how many with the.
Eight conditions, correct.
Eight conditions.
And we didn't pick any up with the discussion that we had this evening? I think it's not. Okay. Uh, so I have a motion, I'll, I'll take a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Uh, that second was what, Gary?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion and second, all in favor. All right, opposed. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Rocco.
Good to see you guys. Have a great night. Have a safe trip home.
Yeah. Watch the ice. Alrighty, uh, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the May twelfth meeting?
We're moved.
Second.
Okay. Uh, got a motion and a second that, John, did you get the names?
Bob seconded.
Okay, Bob second, Gary moved it. Okay. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay. Uh, no referrals from town board, no referrals from the ZBA. Um, I just want to bring your attention to correspondence we got from Chris Jensen. It was an email, five-twenty-two um where he was speaking not as the code enforcement officer, but as the MS four coordinator uh regarding lake and stream setbacks. Uh, just to sort of forewarn us to keep an eye out the, I, Eric, I, I wasn't sure which application. Eric, I, I wasn't sure which application he was referring to. He said it was a 4.2 foot, 4.25 foot setback that was approved by the ZBA. Which application was it?
Barclays on Sandy Beach.
Ah. So instead of 25 feet, it was 4.62. All right. Well, certainly keep Chris's concerns in mind as we move forward and he's got a tough job to do as the MS4 coordinator, so he's got to answer for any any variances from what's required on the program.
Well, you know, in, in, in light of the discussion we just had on sediment roof control, particularly on houses that are close to the lake, it's something for us to consider that if the ZBA approves a, a variance that allows for closer construction, then that triggers us to, to enable stricter guidelines in terms of roofing materials or things like that that would, you know, cause problems. So as long as the ZBA keeps us at 25 feet and beyond, then normal construction, we're okay. But if they decide to move to allow closer construction, then that enables us to be more restrictive on what we can allow.
In that particular house, Ryan had the same concern with the asphalt because they were so close, really close, and it was warranted in that case. Absolutely, Ryan.
Well, and I, I think my concerns with the two applications tonight, and I, and I'm sorry, I, me and Rocco actually really get along. We're good buddies. Is that when the discharge is so close to the lake.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like if it's gonna be that close, like the, the first application tonight, there was that dry well and Brandon Marks are even mentioned that any overflow will go right into the lake. And then on this application, the, the gutters went right into the lake. So that, that's my concerns. And then, and exactly because of, you know, if we're, if we're gonna, if the ZBA is gonna allow for that flexibility to grow, then I think that we have to exert a little bit of authority to, to do what's right in, in light of pollution. And so I will, I will look into that stuff. The reason I know this is because when I tried to collect rainwater in Colorado, I was told you can't, like, the farmers in Colorado, you, you don't wanna feed your animals water from asphalt roofs because of the pollutants.
Wow.
So I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'll look up some sources. I'll try to find the science behind it. I apologize for not having that stuff off the top of my tongue, but, so those, those are some of the concerns, is that there's pollution. And it's not only, it's not only petroleum, but there's heavy metals. There could be a lot of stuff in there that we just wanna, you know, if, if it's all hands on deck for the pollution that I just, I'm, I'm always gonna talk about that. So I, I apologize for making it heated tonight, but I, I, you know, I just wanna, I thank you for letting me explore that.
No, no, it was a good discussion and something's come out of it cuz if you're willing to do, take on that effort, Ryan, that would certainly be appreciated. And would you like to contact Kevin and coordinate, or do you wanna run, have Eric contact Kevin and sort of run a parallel review?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I talked to Kevin. I can, I can shoot him a text. I know that I, there was a point, I did have a conversation with him in several years, but yeah, we can, we can talk about that. You know, there's a lot of this is, is that when, you know, the, an article I'm looking up right now is that you know, building materials in general offer a lot of different pollution, you know, but, so, yeah, I can reach out to Kevin. I know
Hey, Ryan, can I talk to you? Remember, do you remember though, I had a conflict that they wanted to put pressure-treated wood on the lake and they said it was okay. The whole board said it was okay and I disagreed with that.
Well, one of the things that has changed Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I don't believe pressure-treated is, I mean, they're, they're, there's teeth that, that's not allowed by the DEC. It's not allowed by
The DEC approved it, Chuck.
Right.
I asked for that.
How long ago was that? Bro, was that
Was it the one on Northman Chief?
I remember that. It was hard to get to apparently. Nobody was could get to it, but from the lakeside.
I, I thought I thought pressure-treated timbers were not allowed along the lake for retaining.
So, but, yeah, I brought it up and they said it was okay.
And I think the DEC even said it was okay. Isn't that correct? It wasn't approved material?
Correct.
Yeah. I don't know. I know riprap, you know, even, even they refrain, they don't like concrete walls either because of the the surge, the wake, the reverb or whatever they call that, where it bounces off the wall.
Right, right.
And I thought the pressure-treated was not. And I, I can remember applications for the last couple of years where people were taking out pressure-treated because, and they couldn't put them back in because they were not approved. So, wow, we all learned something tonight on everything.
Yeah.
It was that educational experience. Well, okay, Kevin, Ryan rather, if you could hook up with Kevin and report back to us. Certainly it'd be nice to have something with a little more teeth to it so that when we talk to these applicants and say, hey, you know, you've gotta provide for this, the silt that comes off, the grit that comes off the roofs. And, you know, being able to quote some sort of scripture verse or some sort of regulations, that would certainly be helpful rather than just saying, I don't think it's a good idea. So
I, and I agree with that. I wish I would have a photo of the water I collected off of my garage before I replaced it with a metal roof. The material just ends up, now granted, it was a very old roof.
Yep.
Right? But there's, there's gotta be an onus on the, on the, on the landowner to, to maintain their roof and their shingles, but sometimes that doesn't necessarily happen. But yes, I will, I will coordinate with Kevin and others because sometimes Kevin doesn't necessarily get involved and he doesn't wanna get involved. But I will look up and, and and, and, and get back to the board. You bet.
Okay, that's good. And as I guess Gary said, that if it involves a zoning variance where there was a setback relief granted, then all the more reason to make sure that we have the proper controls. Okay. We have no letter of credits or bonds to release tonight. Okay, nobody wants any money? Training sessions? Well, they're out there. They're, they're not real accessible other than by, by doing them virtually, so certainly take advantage of them if you can. Eric, do you know how much longer this will be a remote virtual meetings, or is there any inkling as to when we might reconvene in person?
I would venture it's probably not until July.
Okay. Well, I was just thinking, if things start to slow up with applications, that maybe we could do as part of one of our meetings, a training session, and we could all, we could all get credits at the same time and we count to our, our credits that we need to get since we got no relief from what we have to get. And I, I'm not saying we should, but I think maybe an online training session during the course of a meeting would be something we should consider if we continue to meet this way for a while. Okay. All right. Upcoming, we've got Sam Casella. His property over Woolhouse next meeting, that's June 9th, Tuesday, June 9th. We'll have a continuation of the Wurges' property over at Waters Edge. We'll see a landscape plan for that. And then a reminder again, our second meeting in June is the 24th, which is a Wednesday because of the primary election day on the 23rd.
And Chuck, for the record, this is Gary. I am not gonna be available on the 24th.
No Gary on the 24th.
So Amanda, get ready.
Step up. You have to do your hair up and you'll, you'll gussied up for us. Okay. Okay, it's 24th. Everyone else will be here on the 9th. Again, it's not a big agenda, but we'll take care of business. We'll get what was left over from tonight as well as the Sam Casella. All right, anybody else have anything for the good of the group? Thank you all. And Ryan, you're on cue.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting at 7:47 PM.
Okay, very good. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, good night all.
Be safe, everybody. Be safe.
Yep. Enjoy the weather.
Night, guys.
Thank you, guys.